Ms. Katie, I'm sure you have noted all in attendance. Appreciate that. So we will go through the final run here after 2024 executive budget. I'm going to do a quick poll here of everybody. I have to ask this question. If everybody didn't back read the entire budget, it is wonderful, 387 pages. And if you felt you had an opportunity to ask questions, most questions at any time.
Dave?
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry.
Yes.
Totally, yes. Okay, yes.
Yes.
Okay, very good. So we've all read the budget. Our first run of the budget did show that we had some that in general, the budget looks very good and that there were four specific issues that we were looking at. So with that in mind, since the committee of the whole, we're looking to move forward with 2024 executive budget public hearing. Let's, Jesse, let's go through the attachments.
Certainly. Thank you very much for providing an opportunity to follow up on the items that came out of our first budget workshop, including the further discussion regarding borrowing for the annual road program that should encompass at least 1.5 lane miles. With that being said, there is an updated memo or additional road lane mile list on your dais this evening.
Administrator, I'm sorry. Could you speak into the mic? People cannot hear you back here.
Sure. Here, once I find the switch. We have no battery. Okay, I will speak up and sit a bit sideways to make sure folks can hear. So the items coming out of the committee, the whole workshop from last week, further discussion, review and discussion of the borrowing and associated lane miles for the road program. The consensus was to get to a point of what numbers could be applied with regards to a borrowing to achieve a minimum of 1.5 miles of road reconstruction. A second item coming out of the committee, the whole meeting was review of the funding mechanism for the second school resource officer. In particular, the concern there was that the initial proposal was that the villages portion of the school resource officer program was grant dependent. I will touch on the proposal here in just a moment. Discussion and review of the financial support allocation with towards the fire department special revenue fund and the use of programmed fund balance. To get into each of those items quickly, I'd like to move through them in a concise nature to open up the discussion for the committee, the whole. Road program additions, there is an updated memo that was placed on your dais this evening. Unfortunately, there was some miscommunication with regards to identifying the additional lane mileage to reach that goal of a minimum of 1.5. So the listing update is on your dais. That would be if the consensus is reached amongst the committee, the whole this evening is what would be built into the budget to reach 1.62 miles of road reconstruction with a cost associated of $403,751. Those are identified there. There is a an alternative also mentioned. Thank you, Director Thomas, for providing options for the committee of the whole to consider. If slightly less than 1.5 miles of lane reconstruction is acceptable, we would propose removal of Chateau Drive, which is about 900 foot segment. That would bring us down to 1.45 miles of road reconstruction, but with a cost of $191,584. So there are a couple of options there, just over 1.5, just under 1.5 lane miles of reconstruction.
Jesse, if I could just copy there for a second. Over 1.5, what was the cost on that, please?
Above and beyond what was identified in the executive budget.
And under 1.5.
And under 1.5 would be 1.45 miles of road at 191,584, 191,584.
Thank you.
Absolutely, you're welcome. The next item on the list would be the funding proposal for the second SRO position. Very happy to bring forward to the committee, the whole, a collaborative effort between the police chief and myself with regards to the ability to fund the villages' cost share of the second SRO through this collaborative effort. On January 1, 2024, the current record specialist, which is a non sworn or civilian position within the police department, was actually hired and will be attending the police academy to become a sworn police officer. That said, the proposal here being offered by Chief Capener and myself would be to leave that position vacant, apply those dollars towards the cost share of the villages' portion of that second school resource officer, which would actually leave about $13,000 left over, which staff would propose simply applying that small amount towards the programmed fund balance, thus lowering that just a bit and giving a nod to the concerns regarding the programming of fund balance within the budget. That said, I believe this would be a win-win on behalf of not only the department, but also for the village board as it explores funding options. This is not grant dependent. This is, these are dollars already built into the 2024 executive budget. It would simply be reallocating those, leaving a position open because longer term, Chief Capener has expressed an interest in taking a look at the civilian staff and a potential reorganization there, which lessens any sort of impact under this particular proposal. So I believe that is an excellent collaborative effort and a win-win across the board to address the funding of that second resource officer.
Jesse, should we take a discussion of each of these individually, or do we want to kind of go?
I would leave that to the purview of the board.
I would like to, I would like to recommend to the board here that we establish consensus on each one of these on an individual basis.
Perfect.
Everybody here. So let's go back to, before we get to the SRO, let's go to the updated 2024 program proposal. I know that there was some concern about the borrowing amount on this. I would like to see if we can get consensus. If, A, we wish to go forward with the construction, additional construction, if we are for 1.5 or 1.6 two miles. I'd like to have everybody speak on this relatively soon. So Dave, what was your idea on this?
Well, I just want to remind everyone that if we do go and just redo 1.5 miles of roads per year, that's going to take 40 years to get to each road in the village of Grafton with with 60 miles road. I just want to make sure aware of that and that we may need to look at increasing that distance each, each year so we can, you know, get the roads in a drivable shape before they do all deteriorate to a a low grade on that list, so.
For 1.62?
I'm okay with the 1.5, but again, you said that we know we need to increase that as we move forward.
I'd like to get, you know, if you want to, if you're for it, great, if you want 1.5 or 1.62.
1.45 or 1.62?
1.45 or 1.62.
I'm okay with 1.45 this year.
Okay, very good. Mary Pat?
I'm okay with 1.45.
Very good, Jim?
I prefer the larger amount.
Very good.
1.62.
Yes.
Amber, what condition, what number condition is Chateau Drive in right now?
Oh, I don't have that really, but I was going to ask a two or a three. I would lay a two.
That's a good question. I think that's for a million.
And the reason that one was added as an additional option is just because there's no utilities on that road. No sanitary, no water, no storm sewer. So it is one of those roads that's kind of easy to plug in, but not affect the rest of the budget.
I think I would prefer the 1.62 then knowing that it's a two.
My concern is that municipal bond rates are at a 10-year, if not longer, high. We're paying 40% in interest on every dollar that we borrowed in the past cycle that we just approved a couple of months ago. So I'm not comfortable above 1.45.
Okay, so we have no 1.45.
Excuse me, President Delort, we do have Trustee Harbeck online. She dialed in a bit after the meeting commenced, but is available online.
Trustee Harbeck, did you hear the question that was posed?
Yes, I did. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, I would prefer the higher amount, 1.62.
Okay, very good. I would go with 1.62. So I guess that that carries 1.62. Thank you, Lisa. All right, let's go to the SRO. Discussion about the SRO, just a heads up. I think that I did get some feedback from the, I did get some feedback from the school district that the school district did in fact hear what we were saying about the SRO and I would like to believe that there is some ability for negotiation between the the school district and the village regarding to additional costs, but I would prefer that that be handled in a negotiation between the school district and the village, between the administrator, superintendent and the presidents of that, of the Grafton School District and the village board. And once we have that number identified for renegotiation, certainly I would come to both of our boards for approval on that. So second thing with the, with the SRO position, are we okay with the addition of the school board? Lisa, let's, I'm sorry, the SRO, Lisa, let's start with you.
Okay, you're asking me if I'm okay with the second SRO position?
Yes.
I'm definitely okay with the second SRO position, but I do have concerns about the cost share. So that would be my only holdout on things.
Yes, and as I said, we are going to be negotiating that with the school district. As a, that's something we're going to need to do as they're a contractor. And if we in fact have to increase the price, we'll deal with that on a, on a negotiation of a, of a specific contract. I believe that's where we are, correct, Jesse?
Correct. And the beauty of the proposal brought forward this evening for the committee's consideration is the fact this illustrates what the funding cost share is today. So the long and short of it, as it sits today with no renegotiations or any changes, it is affordable to be able to approach the, the funding mechanism in this manner. That said, it would be a bonus, if you will. Should the negotiations move forward and the cost share change, there would be more available on the villages' side of formula. So this is a great spot for us to be in. It's affordable today.
And the school budget, the school district's budget runs June 2, June?
July, July 1 to June 30.
So that will give us some time to negotiate with the school board for that SRO for additional funding, additional coverage.
Could I ask a question, one additional question?
Yes, you may.
Okay, Jesse, I was looking at the information that you provided, the background data, and it says 59,700 of total salary and benefits is allocated in the budget with the SRO starting July 1st. Does that mean that's really only half the salary?
Correct. Correct. That's a budget allocation for a physician starting on July 1. That is all in salary and benefits. Yes, yep.
Okay, so, so for a year going forward, it would really be double that?
Potentially, yes, it could be, or, or less than double, depending on what benefits package the individual would take, whether or not somebody comes in on a lateral transfer, which is allowed for within our collective bargaining agreement, being, meaning that they could come in at a higher level than a simple step one. So there are different factors that go into this, but that said, this, this factor right here for a half year salary and benefits, we are confident and comfortable with.
Sir.
Anything else, Lisa?
No, that's it. That's just my concern. It's about the cost. So going forward, we'll have to talk about it for me. Thanks.
Yeah, I can assure you that the discussion is going to take place. Okay, Clark.
I'm content with this. Would encourage us to continue to look for the cop's grant or other sources of funding to help with the statutory pressures, but recognize that also takes time. Amy?
I just want to hear from Chief Capener that you're okay with this scenario.
Good with this, this is a trustee. Understanding of all the possibilities there. I agree with you.
Thank you.
In line here, as an employee in the district, I'm as big as the sun. I'm concerned about the very place.
And creative way to get to purchase a position, which is fantastic, but I do want us to pursue cop's grant because we need to three up the funds for the place to finance and, and of course, the collaboration of the school. Yes.
Thank you, Mary Pat.
I am more than I echo the team comments that others have made.
All right, thank you very much. I was sort of attached to. I'm good.
And finally, one, one comment real quick. I recognize that, I appreciate and understand wanting us to sue the cops grant still. However, I want to caution the board that if we prove this and it gets funded, it's programmed into our budget, if I apply for a grant, it can't be programmed into my budget because of the fact that it becomes planted. So we have to be very careful on how that is, how that works. Do we phone it? Thank you. Okay, very good. I was going to say.
Yes, coming out of the last budget workshop, there was a request to revisit the tax levy allocation program for the fire department within their special revenue fund. As presented in the 2024 executive budget, there is a slight decrease in property tax levy allocation. However, there is a offset and then some with state shared revenue, act $12 in the amount of $74,000, where the rollback of tax levy would be about $51,000 or $52,000. Additionally, we are looking to see additional contributions from both the town of Grafton and the village of Saukville. So discounting any ambulance revenues or call revenues, there's a 3.1% revenue increase program for the fire department. That said, we do believe, we, or actually I should say, we forecast as a staff revenues very conservatively. That said, we do rely heavily on our billing company. And then we kind of roll those back and again conservatively budget for call revenues. That said, we are seeing significant call and a consistent amount of call volume increase, not only over the last year, but also over the last decade, a longer trend. That said, I think those conservative revenues from calls can and will uptick. But again, that is just something to consider. There is ample fund balance available within the specific fund. The fire department is on the cusp of a significant change with regards to a funding referendum. That is out there. That is something we're exploring and will be looking to go to the public in spring. And last but not least, within the IFC, I did set forth a tax levy trend analysis just showing how the allocation of tax levy across the various departments and funds has played out over the course of the last seven, eight years. The long and short is staff does not believe the tax levy allocation should change from what was proposed, but that is for the committee of the whole to discuss and make a recommendation with regards to the budget.
What's the projected CPI this year?
5.2, I believe, is what was reported by the state of Wisconsin.
And what's the
for the village? Yep, let me take a look at my previous notes here. And actually, just one moment, please. So we have a tax levy increase. Okay, excuse me, the CPI inflation index, as reported by the state of Wisconsin, is 5.4%. So the CPI inflation index, as reported by the state of Wisconsin for budget purposes, is 5.4%. The tax levy increase as proposed under the executive budget is 3.57% increase. So we are below CPI with regards to the ability to collect our primary source of revenue.
Okay. Very good. Start with the please keep in mind that the budget has a balance. Not a ton of funds available here. I need to come up with something.
Correct. The levy would have to come from a different location within the budget. Yep.
I'm, I'm good with this. I'm good with this. We, I'm concerned about April.
Well, I think we're all concerned about April. Fact that's in front of us is that April is not going to change. That is coming. Got to get attention.
A lot of random. That
Oh, that sure my, my, my question, Chief Price, are you okay with all this?
Something that you know, that I, I don't deal with the balancing of the budget, so to speak. So it becomes strategies that I'm not familiar or that have much, many more tentacles that I'm, that I deal with. I'm, I focus on operations, wanting to get those operations done. So I don't think I really, my concern, like all yours, is looking at a referendum. I get how it's with all of this. Now that it doesn't work out well, we'll have to face a pretty serious problem. That's really my great concern. As long as what we're doing here doesn't
I want to rely a lot on the ambulance revenues because I just think that should be extra bonus for us, but I'm
but I'm okay with where we are. I would suggest that
Lisa?
Okay, I'm sorry, I can't hear a lot of you guys, so I'll just kind of say my couple of words. I, I recognize the, the description and the information, but I still would prefer we keep the same amount in the tax levy. So it, you know, we just agree to disagree.
Is that it, Lisa? You're, you're done? You're okay?
Yeah, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, consensus is we're good with what we have, Jesse. Let's go to attachment four.
Attachment four, analysis of program fund balance versus actual usage. There was a concern noted about the use of program fund balance, which frankly, I get it from a staff level. Absolutely. It's understandable where that would come from. That said, I did provide a table, which I will get into in a minute. Over the course of the last about decade or so, we actually grew our fund balance. However, there were times in which we did dip into what was budgeted. That said, fund balance is programmed more so as an additional contingency and the total amount is not and never has been intended to be used. Actually, this is a longstanding strategy, 15 plus years worth, whereby the village effectively expands its spending capacity under the state of, state of Wisconsin's expenditure restraint program. In other words, we set our expenditure bar up here to make sure we maintain that extra capacity. However, we program those funds and I want to emphasize this, we program those funds that fund balance without the intention to use it. It's there as a contingency. If we not, if we need it, we've got it budgeted, but we don't intend on using it when we budget it. It is more so on maintaining that spending capacity under that state program, which keeps us eligible in turn for state aids, money from the state of Wisconsin. That said, the, the fund balance table I'm presenting here in the IFC does note that revenues are budgeted conservatively, so there is potential for actual revenues to exceed what we budget, thus no need for the, the use of that fund balance that's programmed. Actual expenditures have historically been less than budgeted due to multiple factors. Department oversight, staffing changes, cancellations, project costs come in well under bid. And the identified use of fund balance in a normal operating year is anticipated higher than any actual use of said fund balance. That said, speaking to the table that was crafted and presented, you can see since, and this actually does predate 2014, but since 2014, we have programmed a particular amount, a varying amount of fund balance within a given year for the budget. Years in which fund balance was utilized are also identified. That said, none of those years come close to what was budgeted and there are other years in which fund balance actually grew because, A, we did not have to utilize that fund balance contingency that we put into the budget, but for various reasons, either lower expenditures, additional revenues, we were actually able to grow since 2014 the amount of the village's fund balance by over $172,000. So that said, yes, the percentage does fluctuate. We do have that 25% threshold. We are in the neighborhood of about 30, 31% currently. That said, we are still very healthy and as staff, it is our job to make sure that frankly, we don't use it unless it's absolutely needed. But again, it is really more about establishing that secondary contingency. So if we need it, it's there, but setting that expenditure bar high so that we maintain compliance with that state program to make sure we get additional state aids in the form of financial payments. So with that, staff's proposal for program fund balance is unchanged. That said, I open it up to the committee for discussion.
Lisa, let's start with you.
So yeah, I, I do see that and I do understand this. I guess I am fine with it. I, but again, I was hoping that we could use some of the fund balance for you know, for the police depart, I'm sorry, for the fire department, for the amount of taxes that they're losing, but I understand that that's not possible. So I'm fine with this.
Thank you, Lisa. Clark, your question?
Yes, and thank you, Jesse, and Paul for the information related to this. I appreciate it. My concern is primarily longer term, looking that though the fund balances have increased in a raw dollar amount, we do have that 25% threshold. We are getting pretty close to it. The general fund expenditures are growing at a fairly good clip at this point in time. So the bar that we need to meet to keep 25% keeps going up and just wanting to think longer term strategically about how can we ensure that we maintain that level? If, even if we're just keeping our fund balance exactly the same. So I'm fine with how the budget is now for this year, just a little hesitant as we get to future years.
Yeah, let's, let's work with 25 and 25. Hate to keep saying that. I think each year gives us a different, a different opportunity, Clark. As we look through the point well taken, but like I said, let's stay focused on 2024. Amy?
I'm fine with it.
Yeah, good. Hey, Pat?
I think we're in a good spot for 2024.
Very good. Okay, so we've identified, as I understand here, Jeffrey, I think we've identified all before if you could have come up in communication.
Yes, that is what staff took away from the last workshop with regards to consensus that was reached on different items and that there were those specific items identified in the IFC with regards to future discussion, hence we're here this evening.
Okay, it seems that we have consensus of the committee of the whole to move forward on the 2024 executive budget, the public hearing as presented. Do I see consensus here? Consensus, Jim?
Yes.
Okay, very good, Lisa?
Um, so we don't actually vote though on the budget till next week, correct?
Actually, you, actually, you would not vote on the budget until the second meeting in November, um, the first meeting in November is the public hearing. That's where we will gather um feedback from the public, um, and then. Um, with that, uh, we would move the budget to that second meeting date in November and which is, I apologize, I have that here in front of me that I can speak to a specific date. Uh, November, okay, so November sixth will be our next meeting, with a village board meeting, which is the public hearing. Um, then November twentieth is where the village board takes uh formal action to adopt the budget and associated tax rate.
Where we are. Where we are this evening, again, the question, the uh action requested is we have. Um, obtained consensus of the committee of the whole to move forward to twenty twenty four executive budget to public hearing as presented.
Right, so I'm a. Right, so I'm a no on this, but I mean, again, I'm in the minority, so.
All right, very good, I will look for a motion to adjourn.
Make motion to adjourn.
On second.
Motion in second, all in favor, say hi.
Hi, hi.
Post, that motion carries, you're in, you're in.